Hello. Deborah?
Hello.
Tom?
I'm here.
Veronica there, it's Deborah. I dialed in earlier but it took me off.
Is everybody on?
Deborah?
One is on. Tom?
Veronica.
Brett there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, good. Okay, we have all five council members. Who are the staff members? Lucy? Alex?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
Sonia's here.
Okay. Sonia?
Mark's here.
Mark? Mason's on.
Stacy's on.
Stacy? Mason? Mason?
Bill Vaughn.
Bill? I have Lucy, Alex, Sonia, Mark, Stacy, Mason, and Bill. Anyone else? Are we waiting for anyone else before I start the meeting?
No.
Okay. Gary's not coming?
I think he had planned to, but he hasn't called in yet.
Okay. All right. So, everyone okay? I'll start the meeting, is that okay?
Yeah.
Lucy, are we all right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. And the time is 5:04. And we just exited closed session. And I'm going to bear with me, I'm going to read the closed session items. And it started with closed sessions. Members of the public may address the City Council on the following closed session items. Speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement by dropping it off to the utility payment box at City Hall 520 J Street, by emailing, by mail or emailing to the cityclerk@lostvanessa.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the City Council meeting. All right? So, did we have any comments on closed session, Lucy?
Um, I-
The Director Maloney?
I don't have any comments for closed session.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to read the closed session items. Conference of Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Agency Designated Representative, City Manager Terazza, City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk Human Resources Director Maloney, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Tupo, Employee Organizations, Los Vanes Police Officers Association, LBDPOA, Los Vanes Police Sergeant Association, LBPSA, Los Vanes Firefighters Association, LBFFA, Los Vanes Police Dispatchers Community Service Officers Association, LBDPCSOA, and Los Vanes Public Employees Union Public Works, Local One, AFSCME, and Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employee. Item B. Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph IV Subsection D of the Government Code Section 54956.9, One Potential Case. And Item C. Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation in Government Code Section 54956.9 Subsection D1. Name of Case, California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance versus the City of Los Vanes Groundwater Sustainability Agency, Santa Claus Superior Court Case Number CV-20-001748. And in all three items, A, B, and C, there is no reportable action. So at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order at 5:07. And Chief Hurley, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, Lupti Indivisible.
Okay, for all. Okay.
I apologize.
That's all right. Not a problem.
I can start all over if you'd like me to. I gotta put my hand up.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. All right, let's go on to roll call. Director Maloney, would you call the roll, please?
Faria? Faria?
Oh. I'm here, I had it on mute, I'm sorry.
Johnson Santos?
I'm here.
Jones?
Present.
Lewis?
Here.
Volalta?
Here. We do have a quorum. Let's go on to Item Five. Consideration of Approval of Agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Veronica.
Okay, do I have a second?
Louis?
Second that, Brett Jones.
Okay. I have a motion by Johnson Santos, second by Jones, for the approval of agenda, of the agenda. Roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Volalta?
Yes. Okay, council members, just little housekeeping items. When we go through the agenda items, if an agenda item needs to be discussed, then I will call each council member's name after calling staff to present what they're going to present. And then so all council members will be able to speak if they wish. So now, let's go on to public forum, number six. Members of the public may address the City Council on the following closed session items. Oh, wait a minute. Do we add that? Okay, we can say it. Speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement by dropping it off to the utility payment box at City Hall 520 J Street, by mail or emailing the cityclerk@lostvanessa.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the City Council meeting. So is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum of the regular meeting? Mr., Director Maloney, do we have any comments?
Yes, I have three public comments.
Are they pertaining to an agenda item?
Um, I think, um... One, I think one is, and I think another one is regarding an item on the consent agenda. And then the third one, I just got it right now. It's about the item number seven H. So two on seven H and one I think is general. It may be related to seven H.
All right. So what we can do is go with the general one and then wait to answer the other two at the time during the consent agenda, if that's okay with council. So why don't we, why don't you read the general comment?
Okay, this first one is from Janice. Question for council meeting today. Please clarify on the new order. Are minor children allowed to accompany their parent guardian while shopping? Many children are too young to leave home or in the car, and not everyone has the option for daycare, et cetera. For example, would an infant or toddler be limited from entering an open business because it's not one cart, one person?
Okay, I think that's what we can answer on the... Let me see, which resolution is that? That is H.
Okay.
If the council doesn't mind, we'll pull all, we'll pull H, and then you can ask those three questions, and then we can get an answer because that's under a specific item that's already listed on the agenda. Okay? So are there any other comments for the public forum, Director Maloney, other than those three that pertain to H?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I would encourage the public, if you have any type of comment, I would like you, please, not to direct those to our individual Facebook pages for each council member, but to direct them to the city clerk. So all city council members were able to observe those questions and get an answer through the city. So please do not send them specifically to a council member. That way, all of us can have access to all the answers and get an answer for you. Okay, so at this time, I will now quote-
Mr. Mayor, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I read into the record the city staff that are on the line?
Um, yes, go ahead.
You have Alex Terazza, City Manager, William Vaughn, City Attorney, Stacy Elms, Community and Economic Development Director, Mark Faison, Public Works Director, City Engineer, and Mason Hurley, Fire Chief. In the council chambers, you have Sonia Williams, Finance Director, and Lucy Maloney, the City Clerk and the Human Resources Director. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing that, Director Maloney. Okay. So now, let's go on to consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And Director Maloney, I would like you to read the items into the consent agenda, and then I am going to pull Item H, Declaration of Existence of Local Emergency. But go ahead and read those in, and then we can talk to the rest of the council members to see if there are any other considerations.
Okay, items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 221170 through 221316 in the amount of $742,822.32. Minutes for the April 1st, 2020 City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6198. Awarding contract for legal advertising to the Los Vanes Enterprise for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, and authorizing the city manager to execute agreement. City Council Resolution Number 6199. Rejecting all bids for the construction of the Los Vanes Dog Park Project. City Council Resolution Number 6200. Authorizing entering into a Second Amendment to Lease Agreement between the City of Los Vanes and Ferrara Ranches LTD for the purpose of leasing pasture land located at the City of Los Vanes Wastewater Treatment Facility. City Council Resolution Number 6201. Accepting public improvements for Stone Creek at Los Vanes, the Villages Seven, Phase One. More specifically identified as APNs 431-060-027, and a portion of 430-060-016 and 430-060-039, and the applicant is Anderson Holmes. City Council Resolution Number 6202. Amending the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget in the amount of $24,000 as it pertains to revenues and expenditures for SB2 planning grant. City Council Resolution Number 6203. Continuing the declaration of the existence of a local emergency within the City of Los Vanes COVID-19. And I believe that's the item that the mayor is requesting be removed for separate consideration. City Council Resolution Number 6204. Designating applicant's agent for the purpose of obtaining state and federal disaster assistance and emergency preparedness grants. And Ordinance Number 1183. Authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Los Vanes and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System to implement Section 20516. Employees sharing additional pension costs for local safety members, police, and fire. In that ordinance, you'll also be waiving the further reading and adopting the ordinance as submitted with all the other items to be approved as submitted.
Okay. So I have pulled H. City Council Resolution Number 6203. Council members, I'm going to call you by name and see if you'd like to pull any other resolutions to be approved in the consent agenda. And we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
No, no other item.
Okay, Mr. Faria? No items. Mrs. Johnson Santos?
No item.
Mr. Jones?
No items.
Okay, also, I see that D, rejecting all bids for the construction of the Los Vanes Dog Park Project. And if Mark could just give us a quick update on that one, too. So let's remove D and H. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item D and minus Item H? So moved. Do I have a second?
Louis? Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Faria, second by Mrs. Lewis, to approve the consent agenda, including the waiving of the first reading and adoption of the ordinance as submitted J. All in favor, minus Item H and minus Item D? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, Director Maloney?
Faria? Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Volalta?
Yes. Carried unanimously. Okay, Mr. Faison, would you explain D to us, please? Give us an update?
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, council members and mayor. Now, we've got, the bid results are in there, and we did get a low bidder. We only have about $100,000 left in this account at the moment. And we did expect this bid to be higher. But due to the financial impact of the virus and all, we're recommending we reject all the bids and rebid this at a little better economic time, which we hope will be soon, like maybe in July or August, depending how that works. And at the same time, while we do this, this will give us some time. There's a one-time parks grant that we're supposed to be given in May for about, for, I think it's $185,000, which actually has to be used on one project and actually would make up the difference of the budget amendment that we would have required. We would have required a budget amendment for about $170,000 to do this bid the way it is. So if the state comes through with this one-time grant in May, and we haven't heard otherwise, we would recommend that that would go towards this with the $100,000 from the Park Development Fund for a future bid after the fiscal year, the new fiscal year. The same plans and everything, we'll go forward with this. That's our recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you. Council, I'm going to ask, are there any comments, Mrs. Lewis?
No comments.
Mr. Faria?
No comments.
Miss Santos?
No comment.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
No comments.
And I have none also. Okay, let's go on to Alex and City Attorney Vaughn, City Manager Terazza and City Manager Vaughn for City Council Resolution Number 6023. Continuing the declaration of the existence of the local emergency within the City of Los Vanes COVID-19. And you can explain the new health order that's up for approval in H and also answer the three questions possibly that were submitted to the City Council.
Mr. Mayor, this is Bill Vaughn. I'd be happy to do that. But before we do that, could you vote on Item D that you had pulled?
Okay, we don't want to do them both together, but I'll gladly do that. Okay?
Well, afterwards, they just have to be done separately.
Okay, well, let's just do it now, City Manager or City Attorney, and that'll be fine. Okay, so if I could please have a motion on Item D of the consent agenda only. City Council Resolution Number 6199. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor-
Veronica? Go ahead, Deborah.
Go ahead, Mrs. Lewis. Go ahead, Mrs. Lewis.
I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6199 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Louis, second by Santos for the approval of Item D on the consent agenda. City Council Resolution Number 6199. Roll call vote, Director Maloney?
Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Volalta?
Yes. Item is approved. Carried unanimously. Okay, City Attorney Vaughn?
Mr. Mayor, let me, if I might recommend or suggest, if I could present the item, kind of run through a summary of the order. kind of run through a summary of the order, and at some point hand it off to, I think you either promoted or demoted the City Attorney or City Manager.
[laughing]
But at some point, hand it off to the City Attorney to address at least one of the questions, if I might suggest that.
Go ahead, City Manager Terazas.
All right, thanks, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this item is, the overall item is a resolution of the city council, continuing the declaration of the existence of a local emergency here in Los Banos. As you'll recall, on March eighteenth, the council adopted Resolution Number six-one-nine-zero, ratifying the declaration of the city manager slash director of emergency services of a local emergency. California government code requires the city council periodically, every sixty days, to continue the existence of a local emergency by resolution. So a little bit of this is in real time because we did just get a more recent update from the county on the number of confirmed cases here in Los Banos. So we do have seventy-eight confirmed cases, forty-nine active cases, twenty-six recovered cases, and unfortunately, three deaths here in Merced County. This has grown from literally several weeks ago, zero, to the point where we are now at seventy-eight. As of, and again, this is somewhat in real time, as of, I believe, April thirteenth, the county started providing specific numbers for the number of positive cases in cities in the county. So we do have thirty cases here in Los Banos, sixteen cases in Merced, six cases in Gustine, and six cases in Atwater. The county had changed the way those number of cases were being reported. They were indicating to us as city staff that because of HIPAA privacy issues, they weren't releasing a specific number of cases by jurisdiction, but they did feel since those numbers were increasing, they would release those numbers, and the HIPAA privacy issues, because there were so many or a growing number of cases were less, was less of an issue. So in summary, thirty cases in Los Banos at this point, that has grown over the last several weeks. So because of that rate of growth, and we are recommending that the council adopt the resolution before you today to continue the existence of a local emergency here in the city. The resolution for the most, does a couple things. It extends the declaration and ratifies whatever actions I, as the emergency manager, have undertaken in the last several weeks, and that has been primarily to close the parks here in Los Banos. You did see, and there was provided with the agenda packet, a second declaration or a second order issued by me as the Director of Emergency Services. What we've essentially done is a couple things, required essential businesses to, first of all, create a social distancing plan, and then secondly, create a sanitation plan. These have to be posted at the business and made available to employees. Really, what we're trying to do is, I mean, it's the term being used, what we're really trying to do is flatten the curve, reduce the number of cases here in our community, here in our community. What we're hearing, and what was communicated on a recent call that I was on with Merced County Public Health, is that they are not expecting our peak until mid-May. So we are far from over with this coronavirus, and at least I, as the Director of Emergency Services, did feel it was important to issue the order that's included with this resolution this evening. So what we've done is created a subset within the essential businesses of a category of businesses we're calling covered businesses, that would be required to do more than create your social distance plan and the sanitation plan. So for those covered businesses, individuals, customers and visitors going into those covered businesses, grocery stores, pharmacies, home improvement stores, gas stations, convenience stores, and restaurants that were providing takeout, and banks, for customers and visitors going into those establishments, they would be required to wear face coverings. Those face coverings can be made out of various materials. The list of materials is included in the declaration. We did not create that list on our own. We used Department, I believe it was Department of Public Health and CDC guidelines to come up with that list of materials, and there is a reference to two websites in the order, one for Department of Public Health, California Department of Public Health, and the CDC for more information on face coverings and what sort of materials can be used for face coverings. In the order, there's also, I think what the individual was commenting on, or at least one of our comments we've received, is part of the order is to create what we're calling a one-person-per-shopping-cart directive when customers are going shopping. Again, an effort to create, or I'm sorry, reduce the number of individuals in a store to create the opportunity for that social distancing, and more importantly, reduce the spread of the disease and help to flatten the curve. There's also a provision in the directive that provides for limiting the number of customers per square foot in the store, and what's included in the directive is five customers per thousand square feet of space. We're also encouraging establishment businesses, grocery stores, to install Plexiglas Sneeze Guards at cash registers. We're not requiring that, we are encouraging that. And lastly, I'll add, in regard to the sanitation plan, if we find that it's not accomplishing what we feel is necessary, and what I would feel is necessary as the Director of Emergency Services, we have the ability to increase the frequency of cleaning or add additional requirements to cleaning, either hard surfaces, shelves, doors, and/or shopping carts and baskets. So I think that's all I have. I'm hoping I covered most of what's in the new order. I do know, as the clerk indicated, there are a couple comments, one at least that I received and forwarded on to the clerk regarding the one shopping cart, one person. So I was going to hand that over to the city attorney. I did say, I will say that city attorney and I worked on this order over the weekend to present this, or to create this and present this to you as the city council. So I guess with that, available for questions, and the city attorney slash city manager is also available for questions as well. Thank you.
So why don't, yes. Why don't we go to? I'd like to add a couple things before you go on.
Yeah, I'm not going to go on. I just want to, I just want to say, council, let's hold our questions until the city attorney is finished with his presentation and has answered the questions we had from the public. Go ahead.
So the only thing I would add to, the only thing I would add to what the city manager just said is that the mask requirement also applies to employees in a covered business. And as far as the employees go, employers are required to provide those masks to the employees. But I think everything else the city manager indicated is, pretty much summarizes the entire order.
Thanks, Bill. I did a huge part of the order that I couldn't read my own handwriting and missed. Thanks.
Okay, so let's do this. The city clerk has three questions, am I right, Director Maloney?
Yes.
All right, would you read those questions one at a time, and we'll get an answer?
Okay, the one that I previously read, before I get started, I just wanted to make note that Police Chief Breezy was on the line. He joined the meeting at five fourteen PM. I just wanted to state that for the record.
Hey, welcome, chief.
Okay, so the question?
Hey, go ahead, Director Maloney.
Please clarify on the new health order, are minor children allowed to accompany their parent slash guardian, excuse me, while shopping?
Bless her.
Many children are too young to leave home or in the car, excuse me, and not everyone has the option for daycare, et cetera. For example, would an infant or toddler be limited from entering an open business because it's not one cart, one person?
Okay, who wants to answer that?
I can answer that one.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
So as the order is written, it's one adult person per household will be allowed to enter the establishment that's covered by this order. The operator of the covered business can refuse admission to anyone who's not adhering to that. The operator has the option of not servicing that person that's coming into the store. So the idea is, the idea behind that is not necessarily to not allow like a single person and one infant to come in. The idea is, the order is aimed towards families coming in and using the essential business as a day out of the house. It's potentially from an enforcement standpoint, it's going to be up to the individual store as to whether or not they want to enforce that. But right now, as the order is written, it is written that it's one adult per household is going to be allowed in. We felt there were other options for, in terms of shopping, which include pickup, online ordering and pickup, and some type of, some other delivery services. I think this comes from the city hearing anecdotally, that persons were coming into the particularly grocery stores with not just one infant in the cart, but two or three family members, extended family, and I believe this was the upshot of some of the stores asking for some type of limitation like this.
Thank you. All right, I'll go to council comments at the end of the questions, if there are any. All right, let's go on to the next question, Director Maloney.
Okay, the next question is from Will McBride. To whom it may concern, the mandate ordered by the city manager is an infraction on the civil rights of Americans residing in Los Banas, California. Demanding that everyone be required to wear a mask or cover is absurd as demanding we wear a uniform. You, the council, please review Mr. Alex Terazas' decision. Our freedom was not established with a clause declaring unless there is a pandemic.
I can answer that one, too. So first of all, the order doesn't require everybody to wear a mask. It doesn't require the public, when they're walking out of their residences, to wear a mask. It only requires them to wear a mask when they're entering a covered business where there are other people in the area typically shopping, and employees serving those people. So it's not requiring anyone to wear a mask outside of those covered businesses. I will note that this isn't an order that's unique in the state of California. There are orders like this popping up everywhere, and I believe even in the county of, Sonoma County, they are adopting an order that was described by Mr. McBride, and that is an order that people are to wear masks whenever they're outside of their own residence. This order does not do that. We simply encourage people to wear masks and require them to wear masks if they're going into a location where there are going to be other people and employees that they could be affecting.
Thank you. Director Maloney, read the third question, please.
Okay, this third question is from Yvonne McMurray. I am writing this email to both of you to voice my frustration about the new city ordinance that is set to go in place, allowing only one family member into a store at a time, and the order to wear face coverings. I do not agree that government should have the ability to dictate these basic living liberties. If a person is worried about exposure, then that person should shop online or stay home. Government should not be allowed to get involved and tell me what is essential and how to shop. I had always hoped that our local city officials would be the voice of calm, reasonable action. I was wrong. Our city officials are only adding panic to the residents with these ridiculous orders. I know it isn't today, but there will come a time in our city when you will need my support. Believe me, you will not get it. I have lost all confidence and pride in your abilities to lead in times of trouble.
Hello, this is Mr. Vaughn again. I don't know if that was a question, I think I've answered, that question's been answered by the prior two answers.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? I'll go through staff first. Director Maloney, any comments?
No other comments, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Director, or City Manager Terazas? Any comments?
Nope, nothing else from me, Mayor.
Okay, Director Williams?
No comment.
No comment.
Okay, Director Fation?
No comment.
Director Els?
No comment.
Keith Hurley?
No comment, Mayor.
Mr. Vaughn?
Nothing further.
Keith Breezy?
Well, Mayor, council, my apologies for being late, no further comments, though.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Lewis, any comments?
No comment.
Hey, Mr. Faria? Mr. Faria, any comments? Thank you.
No comment.
This is, thank you, thank you, Tom. Mrs. Santos?
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comments.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, to the public. As I posted in one of my Facebook posts, we're going to be judged when this is over, and we hope to God it's going to be over soon. I can't stress to you enough that I, I don't think I or the council like imposing any of these further restrictions, but we are going by guidance and by our hearts, and... and knowledge that we have received that this is the right thing to do to curb this pandemic. So, you have your right to your opinion. I understand that. But, in the end, we're relying on science and we're relying on calmness to get through this. So, we are so sorry for the inconvenience, but if this is approved, uh, this, this will be what is the, uh, the, uh, the ordinance or the resolution, uh, for emergency services within the city of Los Manos. So, with that, I would call for a vote on City Council Resolution Number 6203. And roll call, Director Maloney.
Faria?
Yes?
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yeah.
Volalta?
Yes. Alright, let's move on to advisement of public notices. Uh, Item 8, and we have two reports tonight, and we'll go to City, uh, uh, oh, God, I just lost it. Uh, Economic Development Director Elm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, there are two reports. The first is for a site plan review, tentative parcel map, and two conditional use permits. This project is for Chipotle and Dutch Brothers to be located at 1420 East Pacheco Boulevard. The next public hearing is for a mobile food vendor uh, to be located at 849 West Pacheco Boulevard, which is Goodyear Shell Gas Station. Um, both of these items will be heard by the Planning Commission on Wednesday, April 22nd at 4:00 PM, and we will be holding that meeting, um, virtually through a go-to meeting, and the link will be posted on the Planning Commission's agenda when it is out for public, which will be this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. And Director Elm, at some point, depending upon what we're, what's going on uh, with, with this COVID-19 pandemic, that maybe we can get kind of a, an economic, uh, uh, development update of our city. And this is good news that, uh, Dutch Brothers and Chipotle are going forward. Uh, it, it's very good news. So, uh, if we could just kind of get some, some kind of, uh, semblance of, of what's happening economically in, in our city, it'd be great too. A little later on.
Yes, I will coordinate with the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, let's go on to Item 9, City Manager's Report. And he has two reports, COVID-19 Status Update, Report Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, Subsection C, 3, Executive Compensation Fire Chief. Go.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I covered most of it under the, the previous agenda item. I will say, um, our Emergency Operations Center that has been activated to, uh, manage, I guess what I'll say, manage the incident and the city's response to, uh, the coronavirus is continuing, uh, we're continuing to be in, involved and engaged with, uh, our regional partners, uh, the county, uh, local business, pushing out information to local business, working, uh, with, uh, uh, local churches, uh, on our response. That, that, that's ongoing. Uh, that effort is being led by Fire Chief Mason Hurley, um, uh, who is doing an, an incredible job at guiding the city, uh, through, through, um, through this incident. Um, I do want to thank, um, all the city employees who are involved in that effort, uh, all the city employees that are continuing to provide service to the community under incredibly stressful conditions. Um, our public counters may be closed, but I assure you, um, we, we are continuing to work, uh, continuing to provide essential services to this community, uh, continuing to provide public safety, um, at, at a high level to our community. Uh, we won't stop, uh, providing services. Um, we, we will be here. We will always be here, and we will be here for the community throughout this, uh, throughout this situation. Um, again, do want to thank the, the, the employees for their dedication. Uh, thank the council for your support, um, as we manage our way through, uh, through the situation. Um, the only, not to be gratuitous, but the only way we will get through this is uh, working together as a community, uh, working together, um, as a, a, a staff team, um, and working with you as the council as a team as well. So, uh, thanks to everyone for the efforts. Um, and it, it is an inconvenient time, um, but, um, really what we're trying to do is save lives at the end of the day. Um, so that's really I, all I have under COVID-19. Uh, under the next item, uh, on April 14th, 2020, uh, based upon my performance review, Fire Chief's salary was increased to $11,924 monthly, uh, $143.88 annually, retroactive to October 28th, 2019. Um, that's all I really have, Mayor. Um, again, just, just can't thank enough, um, employees, the community, and you as the council for, uh, the support, um, during these truly trying, trying times. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Truly a team effort. Alright, let's go on to, uh, reportable, uh, Item, Item 10, uh, Report Update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Measure V Committee. Uh, again, uh, the, the two items that are important that, that are gonna go on and they need to be continually mentioned and worked on, and that's the expansion of our Billy Wright, uh, uh, Waste Disposal Site, because we're going to need one always on the, uh, the west side, uh, so we can service Gustine and Dos Palos and Los Manos. So, we never, and I repeat, never have to transport our garbage to Highway 59 because our costs would be astronomical. So, it's just something we always need to be aware of and continue to work on. And then, uh, the Pioneer, uh, the Pioneer Trail. Uh, uh, we will be meeting with Caltrans again soon. Uh, uh, City Manager Tarazas and I will be, uh, coordinating a meeting, uh, with them because we canceled the last one, and, uh, and, uh, and we want to make sure that that project is not put on the back burner along with the, um, uh, the intersections that we'd like to improve, the 152, so the traffic continues to flow on 152 and synchronization and the like. So, that's all I have, and if we have anything else, we will continue to bring that up. So, let's go on to Item 11, City Council Member Reports, and tonight we'll start with Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, first, I want to, once again, thank everybody who's out there in the trenches. Thank you to city staff, um, for doing what you do day in, day out. Um, and I just want to say that, uh, as Americans, we are used to our conveniences. And at this time right now, I know it is hard to still not look at that and want what we want, but I think it is time for us to give a little bit of sacrifice for the, for the health and wellness of everybody. So, and I think as, as the council, and I think I could speak for a lot of, of most, all of us, excuse me, that we are looking in the best interest of everyone at this time. So, something that may not, may be seen as, may make you a little bit uncomfortable right, right now is something that we are hoping will be over soon, and we are hoping to, that everyone is, is going to be well after this whole wave is over. So, I, I hope everyone to stay safe, keep your distancing, and, uh, be ca, be safe out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos. Mr. Jones?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd also like to echo, um, that we are in some very trying times right now. But we are all in this together, and we want to save as many lives as possible in our county, in our state, and I'm sure other states feel the same way, to preserve lives and to overcome this horrible, uh, pandemic that has hit the entire world. So, um, it's a bit of a sacrifice for us right now, but at the end of the road, it's not just thinking about ourselves, but thinking about others as well. So, um, I, I know that most of the public, um, would probably agree with that, some may not, but at the end of the road, we are all in this together, and we want everybody to come through this horrible thing that we have going on in our United States. Um, couple of other things, um, and I'm, uh, gonna give this to Alex. You know, I'm not sure if Alex can take care of this or the mayor, but I know that in our notifications that we get from Merced County on a daily basis, they used to, uh, indicate in parentheses whether there was no new case or one new case or two new cases, whatever the new cases were, uh, depending on the categories going down, uh, the types of exposures, the gender and the age category. They would list the number of cases that we had. Um, in the new recordings, um, naturally, uh, they've given us, uh, which I really appreciate, uh, the cities and the number of cases, uh, that have, have been counted as positive. But I noticed on the latest, um, notification that we received from the city, from the county, uh, they sent out a second one since we've had the meeting. The second one that we received, uh, does show the, um, the positive cases, uh, throughout the city that didn't on the first one they sent out today. But they still are not notifying us of the number of new cases. So, is there any way that we can ask the county to go back and put that information in the parentheses under the various categories so that we're not having to go back from previous memos and try to figure out where those new cases are? Uh, that's directed for Alex.
Uh, I, I can certainly follow up on that.
Okay, because it, it, it's helpful. I mean, you know, I have to go back and look at previous memos to figure out where those new cases are when we jump from 40, 44 to 48 or whatever the jump is. Um, it, it only says whether they're on the east side or the west side, but it doesn't tell us where the new cases are and what categories. If it's jurisdiction, community spread, health, uh, unknown, whatever the category is, they used to tell us whether there is a zero new case or the number of new cases that would be in those various categories. So, I'd like to see them bring that back to help us at a quick glance know exactly what's going on. Um, the other thing that I'd like to bring up is, um, at our last meeting, um, I spoke about, uh, uh, our, our community having, um, uh, cart washing for our businesses, such as our big box, our grocery stores, anyone that provides a push cart or a handcart for you to use in the store. Now, um, we don't have anything like that as of this point. I think probably what is happening out there is that the employees are just wiping down the carts on the top and perhaps the handles where, uh, customers are holding them. But as I said at the last meeting, I, I don't think in Los Manos, in the time that I've been here, that I've ever seen those carts being sanitized through a steam washing and sterilization. Uh, this, in my opinion, is a protection for all of our community. Uh, and especially when this virus is over, we're still going to have, uh, flu season, cold season, and just the mere fact that people are touching those carts on a regular basis. Um, we put your groceries in the cargo of those carts. So, I would, I would like to see going forward, something on a permanent basis that we have, uh, our shopping carts sanitized in our community for our customers. Uh, and again, this is not singling out any one customer or anything like that. In my opinion, this is protection for our entire community, and this is the one thing that everybody does in Los Manos. They go shopping and they use those carts when they go shopping. So, whatever we can do, um, uh, quickly going forward under this pandemic to get something like that going and to also have something on a permanent basis so that it doesn't go away, that's what I would like our council to do. That's what I'd like our council to be able to do. And so, I'm asking, uh, the council tonight for approval, for our staff to move forward to get an ordinance working, uh, for, for the, the sanitizing of our carts, because what's happening now is only a makeshift and it doesn't clean the entire cart. We have carts that are out in our community still today. And I, I've just driven around in, in my district to do a cursory drive just to get out and, you know, get myself out of the house, and I still see shopping carts afar distance from the company that owns them. So, um, we normally bring those, we bring those carts back to those facilities. In some communities, those carts are destroyed. They are not brought back because of the exposure that's in the community and what it brings back to the store. So, if they're not being sanitized on a regular basis, then that continual exposure happens to the community. So, that's what I'm asking for the council tonight, and, and I'm hoping that, you know, as we're moving forward with these orders, that something else can be done to help us right away. But I would like to see something permanent on the books as far as cart sanitation is concerned. Other than just wiping it down with, uh, you know, a, a COVID-9 approved wipe. So, I-
City Manager-
For, for direction on that.
Okay. City Manager Tarazas, is there a way to, uh, uh, is that considered a council member request? Does it have to go through a separate meeting? Or, or is that something that you can do as a health officer at this time?
Uh, on, on a, I guess a media basis, we, as the, the Emergency Services Director, or Director of Emergency Services, under the order, uh, that was ratified by the council, can, can require, uh, additional cart cleaning. Uh, so on an immediate basis, we could accomplish that. Uh, on a longer term basis, if there's, uh, uh, we could bring back, um, as a council member request, uh, a, a more, um, and, and something that might address the, uh, Council Member Lewis's concerns about a more, uh, more permanent, uh, solution or approach to cart and basket cleanliness.
Okay, so we're gonna do both then. You're going to, uh, uh, you're going to work on immediately implementing that and then bring back something as a council member request to make it permanent?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis, are you acceptable?
I, I'm acceptable with that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Right, anything else, Mrs. Lewis?
Uh, that's it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Faria.
Uh, just, uh, follow the, let everybody know, follow the directives and stay safe so we can get this thing done and over with.
Thank you, Mr. Faria. Okay, I just have a few items tonight, and, uh, for those of you listening out in, in the public, uh, your information page is your Los Manos Police Department Facebook page. That is your information page, and I would ask everyone, if you, uh, if you want to know the, the latest information, and, uh, it also has this directive in it, this order, and we'll be clarifying this more and more and more, uh, to help you if there are any questions or something isn't clear. So, I want to direct you to the Facebook page. That, that's number one. If you have questions, please direct them to the city clerk, because it is very important not just the mayor or people with a Facebook page on the city council get these questions. We want to hear through the city, so the clearinghouse is the city clerk for the questions, and, and, uh, and you will get an answer. Uh, if there are multiple questions with, with the same, uh, uh, with, with, with the, uh, the, the same, uh, uh, subject matter, then we'll answer one question that would, uh, basically take care of all the questions that were asked. Uh, I am in constant contact with the hospital, as is our chief of police, as is our fire chief, as is our city manager. We are very lucky to have the hospital and the hospital administration and staff that we have. They are on top of it. If you drive by, you'll see the, the various tents that are there. They are equipped with ventilators. Thank God, we haven't had to use that many. They are equipped with ventilators, thank God, we haven't had to use that many, uh, uh, so we are well equipped at this time. They have agreements with their sister city hospitals, that even if our ICU were, were, uh, were filled to capacity, they have other ICUs that, that people could be transferred to, but we're nowhere near that. Let me be perfectly clear, we're not, we're not even near that, thanks to you and your efforts to limit this pandemic. Uh, right now, the preparation that the hospital makes is basically the preparation that you make, and the curve is, uh, is, is, is not what they expected, and again, thank God that it, it isn't, because due to the efforts of the stay-in-place order, and then these additional orders that the city is putting in place. The only way, the mask is for someone else's protection, not yours. If you wear a mask and you cough or sneeze, those minute adamant, adamant, I can't say the word, those minute particles will not go out into the air or either that far, and it will protect someone else from getting the virus if, if someone is infected. So please, that's why the mask situation, and that's why we're limiting the density of the number of people in, in our stores. So we're trying to help. History's going to judge us on what we've done, and again, we hope we're doing the right thing. But our hospital is prepared, and, and, and next time you see a healthcare worker, as you would an emergency responder, a first responder, just say thank you and be kind, because they're out there every day, and they're going to stay out there. Uh, uh, Mr. Torazas will deal with, uh, with the, uh, Mrs., uh, Mrs. Lewis's question, and, uh, to find out, uh, if we could, uh, uh, the information that, that's needed on the, uh, uh, the updates every day. Thank you, Alex. And with that, um, I would, uh, I would ask that, uh, that you all stay safe, social distance, wear your masks. So with that, is there any other staff member who would like to make a comment before I sign off? Is there any other council member who would like to make a comment before we adjourn the meeting? Not hearing anyone. Thank you all for your attendance, and I will adjourn this meeting at 6:07. Thank you.